Thank you. And actually, I probably should have remembered what Denny used to say every day, but I'm pretty sure it went something like, you know, you can open up the planning board. This is the planning board meeting for the 29th meeting of 2022. And so we'll call it order. I'll Rich Beeler, acting chair. And this is a roll call vote for folks, our new folks. I'll start with you, Sean Fahey.
Here.
Yeah, and normally what we do is just because we're on Zoom, it's Sean Fahey member.
Understood. Sean Fahey, member of the planning board.
Yeah. Maggie?
Maggie O'Field, member of the planning board.
Meredith?
Meredith Hall, member of the planning board.
And Cheryl.
Cheryl Taguayas, member.
Awesome. All right. I'm pretty sure we've got a pretty, it's not a massive agenda tonight, but just starting off administrative items. Is our next couple of meetings, Tim, May 12th and 26th, are those, are those accurate?
Yeah, so traditional second and fourth Thursday of the month. We do have a, I got a scenic road application that I had to process and schedule a hearing for. So there's a, there's that hearing scheduled for the 12th. I did it for, I did it remotely because I, board hadn't had a chance to kind of talk about what it wants to do. But I think, you know, May 26th onward is, is really up to the board if you want to get back to town hall or remain remote or, that's, I don't anticipate getting any public hearing type things between now and then. So if you want to talk about it tonight, if you want to think about it and talk about it on the 12th, plenty of time to do that.
Yeah, and I mean, I mean, more, almost half the board is new, so it'll be good to chat about, you know, kind of like what is coming up and what year is looking like anyway, so. And Julia, who love minutes, I, do we have, are we caught up or no?
I'm sorry, I was, I was away last week, so the minutes didn't go into the folder until today, so they're there for the 14th. But I didn't give a lot of people enough time to look at them, so.
That's okay. I did not look at them, so. And I mean, I would imagine the only folks that would be voting would Cheryl, myself and Meredith.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I did not get a chance to review those today.
Meredith, you didn't either, right?
No, I didn't. I haven't either, so that's.
Okay, so I'm not the only one that didn't.
They're only a page and a half. They shouldn't take long and we'll just compile all of them together and do it all at once, so.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Awesome. Staff updates, Tim.
So, a couple of things. First off, we have a new assistant town planner. His name is Josh Lee. He is in here. He should turn his video on if he hasn't already, just to say hello. Josh, I will, I'll let him introduce himself and talk about his background. But he's been here a week and a half. He's been doing a great job so far, very capable, very bright, young planner. And Josh, if you want to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about your background and go for it.
Thank you so much, Tim. Yes, it's only been really my first seven days, so I'm still getting my feet in the water and figuring out how things work in Milton. But so far, it's been really informative and I'm really excited to get my teeth into this work. I'm a part of Northeastern's Master of Urban Planning Policy Program. And so that's where my planning background comes from. I'm part of their sort of sustainability planning, so I'll be working with you all, but also trying to steal what of the sort of Milton climate action planning work I can as we do that. My background before the Northeastern program is in San Francisco where I was a land use law paralegal, working on TOD work, mixed use developments down through sort of south of San Francisco, so also in a sort of metro area context for cities like San Mateo and smaller towns. Trying to densify near transit. And then I was also on the other side of things as an advocate with the Sierra Club. So two sides of that same coin, both sort of surrounding municipal planning, but not actually in a directly municipal role yet. So I'm very excited to actually do that with you all and really bring my background, which is focused on sustainability and resilience and equity into this work.
There was also a little bit, I mean, I don't know how much breaking news it is, but the engineering department is actually spearheading a climate action planning effort that we're kind of assisting with. I'll keep you all posted as any kind of updates about that come in. We're applying for a municipal vulnerability program grant to help us do that. Like I mentioned, we have a scenic road application coming up, so I've got a hearing scheduled for May 12th. That's at 693 Cat Nav. It's not, I think it's a couple of doors down from the entrance to the high school. I hesitate to use the term typical scenic road application because there's no such thing anymore, I don't think. But, but it is, you know, a homeowner is looking to do some repairs to an existing stone wall that's kind of fallen into a little bit disrepair. And also open up a, an entrance to a sort of a semicircular drive. So you'll get all those materials. I've sent all those materials out to Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, the Tree Warden and the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. I did talk to Steve O'Donnell today. I don't think that the Historical Commission is going to be meeting between now and the 12th. So what I'm gonna, they're, because of town meeting is on a Wednesday this year, which is not always typical. They're kind of juggling their schedule a little bit, but what I'm going to ask the board to do so that we avoid some of the mistakes of the past, and I blame myself for those mistakes. I'm going to ask the board to just continue that. I mean, hear that hearing and, and, you know, hear evidence and talk to the applicant. But delay decision and, and, you know, continue that hearing until we can get input from the Historical Commission and the other committees. We definitely want to make sure that we've got all that input before, before you'll make a decision. So you'll get all that material in due time. Another thing on the 12th is we're going to have, sorry.
Could I bother you for that street address again, please?
693 Cat Nav.
Okay, thank you.
It's got a, it's got a historic plaque on it. You can't miss it.
Okay.
I'll send the, when I send the application out, they actually have some really interesting historical photos that the, the previous homeowner kind of left them, which is a nice little thing that people do. So those are part of the application. You can see it. It's neat.
Great, thank you.
On the 12th, we had a request for the Dodson and Flinker team to come in to present a draft, final draft of the Milton Village Design Guidelines. We wanted to make sure that they had a document together in time to present to the board, to get some feedback and then to, you know, incorporate any of that feedback. So they'd like to come in on the 12th and then potentially for a follow-up on the 26th. Their, the due date for that project is the end of the fiscal year, so if the 26th doesn't work out, you know, we potentially have, have meetings in June or, you know, depending on how much work there is to do. But they definitely want to get in on the, actually, I have an email from them right now. Let me confirm that they definitely want to come in on the 12th. But we, yeah, so that'll be, that'll, that'll be good. So we'll have that on the agenda.
Tim, before you move on, on that, will they have a draft available to us to review in advance of the meeting?
I can, I'll, I'll see what I can do about that, but yeah, I'll.
I mean, I'm, I'm just making, I'm actually making a request for a draft because we haven't seen a draft. We're up against a tight deadline. It's really important that we get time to review these and that they have time to take into consideration our feedback.
Okay, I will, I'll have them have something prepared. It may, it may not be the complete thing, but you know, that'll, they'll just have to, we'll just have to work it out. But I 100% agree, you'll want to look at something ahead of time, so I will. I'll make sure you guys get that.
Tim, I don't mean to slow you down, but I guess I'm, I just want to make sure I get myself caught up here. On the 12th, then I did participate in the planning board meeting when the presentation was made of, of the, right, that goes back some weeks ago. But on the 12th, they're going to present a draft, which I, and I totally agree with Cheryl asking for an advance so we can take a look at it. And, and what is the 26th date for? What do we expect it to be 26th?
I, I think they, they asked if we could pencil them in for the 26th so that they could present a kind of a more final version of, of the, of the guidelines. Because again, it'll be a little bit of a partial draft and they definitely didn't want to cement anything before they got the board's feedback. So I think the general gist is, is kind of a, you know, initial presentation of the final draft and then a kind of final presentation of the final draft. You know, whether that's the 26th or, or a date in June, you know, I think it's kind of up to the board. But I think that's the general gist is, is they'd like to, you know, get a chance for, for feedback and input and then a chance to incorporate that.
Can I ask a question on that? A question really of Cheryl and Rich. You, you guys have been, you know, along for the ride. Does that seem like that's a little too soon, Cheryl? Or what do you think the right date is for it?
Well, it really depends, I think, on what we see on the 12th or in advance of the 12th. Because we haven't actually seen any proposed guidelines. We've seen kind of framework for guidelines, but not the actual guidelines. And I want to make sure we see, they have time to respond to maybe even two rounds of feedback from us before their contract is up in the fiscal year. You know, just one of the things maybe, Tim, you could explain is that when we've procured contracts with consultants in the past, sometimes they've run over the fiscal year and that turned out to be problematic. And so now we've secured some work this year that's kind of bumping, pumping up against the end of the fiscal year, which is the end of June. So that work has to be complete by then, so that's why the kind of rush of it. But I do, I do think since we meet twice a month, you know, we don't, we don't have that many opportunities, Sean. You know, to have a different iterations of our feedback. And so I do think it, it's worthwhile to keep it on the 12th and 26th and really push for drafts in advance of the meetings.
Okay, all right. I, I trust your judgment and I, and I agree with you. And I guess one last question on this. When do we get, or do we have an opportunity to show their drafts to the residents?
So I, I, we don't have a kind of full, kind of full-blown, you know, second public forum in our contract with, with Dodson. But I think what we can do is, you know, try to publicize, we've got contact information from a lot of the folks that were involved, you know, with the zoning process. I think we can, we can try to publicize the fact that, you know, if, if you want, if you want to see the draft, obviously we'll post it. You know, this, these are the dates of the plan where it's going to be discussing it. You can then open up public comments. So, you know, the planning board meeting itself can kind of de facto, you know, serve as, as a public forum, you know, for people to, to take a look. And again, having the kind of multiple iterations of feedback, I think will be helpful, you know, in kind of facilitating that.
What do we, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was, and, and, you know, I guess in some of these things, I maybe feel like I'm drinking out of a fire hose, so I'm sorry if I'm slowing everybody down. When we get to the final version, what is, what are we doing with the final version?
So I, I think the thought is, and what's typical is, you know, because the planning board is the sort of the permit granting authority under, under this zoning. And the zoning itself kind of refers to the potential existence of design guidelines. If the planning board is satisfied with the guidelines, they meet kind of what your expectations are and, and you think it's going to be a good thing, you know, for, for the district. The planning board will adopt those guidelines as, you know, these are, these are the guidelines we're going to look at and refer to and judge projects on when they come in and looking for permits under this zoning. But really what it is, is a document for both the planning board to kind of refer to and, and for the development community when they bring projects in under that zoning to know that if I want to get through the planning board, my project's going to look like this. You know, because, you know, it's kind of an upfront kind of, you know, assertion that like, this is what we want to see, please do this. Ostensibly, it makes the permitting process a little bit easier because we all agree that these guidelines are good and they're going to produce a good product. So that when you come in and if someone, you know, checks all the boxes, you've got a product that ultimately kind of looks the way that, that you agree that it should look like. So it's kind of a reference for the board and a reference for the, for the development community.
One thing, Sean, that I would point out is that the zoning itself has design standards and those are not, well, we did leave some discretion for those to be waived by the planning board, but they're meant to be less waivable than design guidelines, if you will. Design guidelines are meant to be like, like Tim explained. But the standards are meant to be followed unless there's some circumstance that, that is explained to the board that we find compelling and we could waive something. But, you know, so one's meant to be much more strictly applied than the other. So this, the guidelines are to be less strictly applied than what's in the zoning as the standards. Does that make sense?
It does, but it sounds to me like it's an important document, right?
Yes, it is.
Developers are going to follow it. Those that are residents or neighbors of that area are going to understand that to be something that the planning board has accepted. You know, so I, 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 I'm reemphasizing what you said earlier. Let's get a draft. The sooner we can start to see some of this, the better off we'll be.
Yeah, and the only thing I was going to throw in there too, and it's I agree, and I'm not going to reiterate what you folks just said. And I kind of was keeping quiet at the beginning because I really, you know, once we got the chair and I think it's going to be up to them, or my suggestion would be, I really want us to be thoughtful moving forward this year on our agendas, be like really specific on what our agenda is and why. I, you know, I think the chairs of past have done a great job, but I think what I've learned is we do, we put a lot on our agendas and they get very packed and we touch on things and we don't have really good, good deep conversations on things. And sometimes we, 10:30 at night, we start having a deep conversation. It's like we've lost everybody at that point. And so, yeah, I, I think I agree 100% with what you, Sean, what you and Cheryl just said, and I think, I think when we start talking about those dates, once we kind of, you know, set up the board, reorganize the board, we'll, we'll have, you know, probably the incumbent on the chair to really understand what those dates are and make sure that we don't put something on there that we're not ready to have on there.
Go.
Great.
Any other comments on that?
I completely agree.
Yeah, and also just, sorry, I'm going to throw it in here. So welcome, Josh. I saw you at town hall yesterday and I saw you sitting in the chair, so I assumed you were the new, you're the new one, new person. So welcome. Excited to work with you. Also, I was probably going to wait to write for us to speak, but also like, because we're talking a lot now, but welcome Sean and Maggie to the board. You know, two brand new people, so this is good. It'll, it'll be exciting to have some new faces.
Thank you.
I had a couple more items, if I can just.
I know, but I want to throw that in anyway because we were going long, so go ahead.
No, sorry about that. I just want to make, make sure that we can get into our, the meat of our business. Just really quickly, we had a, a public forum on our bicycle and pedestrian master planning process a few weeks ago. That's kind of being done under the auspices of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but I think it'll be relevant to the planning board. They're going to be coming to the next MPIC meeting in May to kind of present, you know, similarly a kind of a first final draft of what they've been thinking about. That's more, I, I would say that that's something that I, I think is probably more relevant for the select board to kind of adopt as, as an official kind of document. Because it relates a little bit more to kind of, you know, our, the infrastructure of our streets and our traffic regulations. But I think, you know, we'll obviously get that documented to the planning board's hands, and if, if you'd like me to kind of walk through it, happy to do it. But that's going to be a really, a really exciting plan that's been in the works for, for quite some time. And then the, the last thing, you know, because, oops, sorry about that, Sean. You broke up a little bit there.
That's right. Sorry. Who is preparing that plan?
So we're working with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council on that. They're the regional planning agency. They kind of, in this regard, they kind of act as, as in a similar kind of function as kind of private sector consultants for municipalities. So they've done bike plans for a lot of, they, they did Quincy's Bike Plan. I think they did Arlington's Bike Plan. So this is basically trying to help design So this is basically trying to help design a safe and connected bicycle network and also recommend projects and sources of funding. Some of the, some of the proposals that they've got. We actually, we, we, we had, we had really good, really good participation in some of the surveys that have gone out and, and, and pretty good participation.
Great.
The, um, the, the last thing, because we have new members, but I think it's, 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 it's good advice for everybody. Periodically Julia will send around an email with training opportunities from the Citizen Planner and Training Collaborative. This is a, a statewide group that does trainings for planners, planning board members, board of appeals members. Just about sort of the basics of chapter 40A, the basics of 40B, the basics of subdivision control. It really, really, really helpful. I have done, there's only maybe, you know, 10 trainings that they do. I think I've done all of them over the course of years. But we have a budget for training and education for planning board members. And so when those opportunities go up, if you see something that's interesting to you, please let us know. We'll get you hooked up. They've been doing them almost all remotely these days, which I think is great because otherwise you have to wait until they come to Taunton and Saugus and you're kind of at the four quarters of the Capitol.
Worcester on Saturdays is what I did in, in my early days on the board.
Oh, yeah.
Full day Saturdays. And I just want to echo those. I, I did the trainings. I've done a number of these trainings and they're really, really helpful. And I did one on, that if you see it come up, I think was really beneficial. It's called writing defensible decisions. And it was delivered by an attorney who has a lot of experience in, in zoning in the Massachusetts zoning law bylaws. And so I'd highly recommend that. But the others are really good as well. There's a lot of interesting topics from green infrastructure, which is something we've talked about a number of times, which I'd really like this to see. Some, we have to collaborate with the DPW and the town engineer on that. So that's a little bit more complicated than just our board doing it. But anyway, I, I would just echo Tim's plug for those training sessions. I, I found them very helpful.
And then, and then finally specifically for Sean and Maggie, we have a, a new member binder for you. It's a big fat stack of documents that we've done for town hall. So next time you're, you're in the neighborhood, stop by. The, the zoning act, it's got the zoning bylaws, it's got handbooks on subdivision control, approval not required control. A lot of the nuts and bolts stuff about planning board. So every new member gets one. We, we keep the binder industry in business. So just if you're, if you're going to stop by, give us a buzz and we'll have that ready for you. Julie's been preparing those for you.
I highly suggest lift with your knees.
That's all I've got for staff updates. Sorry that, that took a while. Although Sean, absolutely, I am here to answer questions. So don't apologize for interrupting me about things like that. No worries.
Thank you. Is there an electronic version of that binder or is it only in the paper?
We, we, we have all of those documents electronically. We can get them to you. Some people find it to be handy, although maybe there's fewer people finding it handy. So we can, let me, I'll make, I'll make a note of that. We'll get you those electronically.
No, don't, don't bother. I'll pick up the binder and I'll follow how you've been doing it. I don't want to, I don't want to change the, the course.
It's, 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 it's just an email if you need it. So no worries about that. But yeah, there, we, we've got those ready for you.
Thanks for the advice, Rich.
Excellent. All right. So moving on over to citizens speak. So what I would just ask if anybody has anything to say to just raise your hand and we've got some hands raised. So I don't know, Tim, are you sending them over or?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can do this. So we've got our friend Kathleen O'Donnell. So I'll allow Kathleen to talk.
Okay. We've got a few people. So cool. Excellent. Kathleen, you're in.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, because I didn't have the opportunity before to say how much I appreciated working with you and Cheryl and Meredith on the board. And I wanted to say thank you very much. I also wanted to congratulate the new members sort of in person. This is really in person, but it's as close as we can get. And I also wanted to thank the staff. You know, Tim and Julia and our former assistant Allison Quinn were wonderful resources for me on the three years that I served. And I really, really, really appreciated all the help that they gave me when I first switched over from the zoning board to the planning board. And I would point out to the new members that they are an amazing resource and I'm sure that you'll find them as helpful as I did. And I look forward to participating as a citizen and as a town meeting member of precinct seven for the, um, planning for East Milton Square. And I wish you lots of luck on that. And thank you very much. As I said, it's been a pleasure to serve the town these past three years. And I'm sure that you folks as new members will enjoy the intellectual exercise as much as I did. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen. I just wanted, I raised my hand for this, but I do want to interject here. And thanks Kathleen for her three years of service on the board. There's, you know, a lot of work that goes into the meetings, but there's a lot of work that goes into what we do when we're not in meetings. And Kathleen dedicated a lot of time and energy to her work and, and we in the town benefited from all of that. So thank you, Kathleen.
Kathleen, I agree. Thank you, Kathleen. We'll see you in the neighborhood.
Thanks. Thank you, Kathleen. Good night.
I think Robert was next.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Evening. I'm Robert Rosowski, a 30 year resident of Milton, living at 29 Waldo Road off of Elliot Street. I wanted to let people know that an organization called Affordable Inclusive Milton, AIM is our acronym, has just been created and our mission is to increase the amount of affordable housing in Milton and promote a racially and economically diverse population throughout the geography of the town. We want to congratulate all the newly elected people to the planning board and we very much look forward to collaborating with all of you. Members that are continuing and those that are new to increase the supply of affordable housing and increase the diversity of the population of our town. As the planning board, we're hopeful that you can be very planful towards this effort. We do have a website, so I invite all of you to see what we're up to. You can, and you can contact us at Milton AIM, one word. M I L T O N A I M dot org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Katie Conlin is up next.
Katie, you can, you can go ahead on mute.
Evening. Katie Conlin, 42 Reeddale Road. I'm here mainly for item five, which is the Henry's building. But before I get to that, I'd like to also congratulate Sean Baye, Maggie Oldfield on your elections. And also because I hadn't had a chance to do this previously, to thank both Kathleen O'Donnell and Denny Swenson for their years of service on the planning board. I had an opportunity, having just stepped off the select board, to work with both of them extensively on different projects over the years. I, I first met Denny when she was involved with the Milton Muse Project. And I think I will always associate the blue spotted salamander with Denny Swenson. And all of her efforts as a conservationist and the president of the Friends of the Blue Hills before she came onto the planning board. Denny did a lot of work ensuring that our zoning bylaws have tree protection provisions as well as many of the other things that she did on the planning board. So I wanted to thank her for five years of service on the board. And Kathleen, having prior to come on your board and assisted our board, the select board with two 40B projects, served on the zoning board of appeals and helped us with the Affordable Housing Trust when it was created. So she provided a great deal of service behind the scenes and under the radar to the town of Milton. And as Cheryl said, put in just an extraordinary amount of service. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Kathleen O'Donnell for all, for work over the last three years. I wish both of them well. Regarding item five, the Henry's building, it's, it's exciting to see this building down at Central Avenue and Elliot Street, close to completion. It's been worth the wait. We've had a lot of delays. One time, Henry's was the talk of the town for the state of the old ice cream factory. But it was worth the wait. It's, it's going to provide really a beautiful gateway structure at our, at our town. And some of the amenities that the Henry's building includes are not only the four affordable units and the additional open space that's on the site and really just a better plan than what potentially could have been there. But also the 19 shared parking spaces for the business district, which would be very important. I understand that the Connelies have filed an amendment to make some changes to the parkings, but specifically the business parking relating to safety issues. And I'm looking forward to hearing the discussion when you get to item five, but just wanted to speak in support of the application. And I'm confident that this planning board and Mr. Swinski and Mr. Lee will be able to work out a solution that balances the safety concerns that the owner and applicant has with all of the amenities that this project provides. Many people may remember that the town owned a small portion of this property and after a long period of negotiation, the parcels were combined. And this, as a result, this project is some, has some of the attributes, I would say, of a public private partnership. So it's been a great news story for the town. And it's going to be exciting to see it open and people moving in. And will add a lot to the Central Avenue Business District. So I urge you to work out some kind of a solution under item five that benefits everybody and creates a win-win for the town and the developer. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Katie.
Thanks, Katie.
Thank you, Katie.
It looks like all she wrote for citizen speak unless there's other, other folks that want to raise their hands, but we don't have any yet.
No, I am not seeing anybody. But that doesn't mean somebody can't raise their hand. Well, I agenda. Okay. Sorry, we're closing citizen speak. There's nobody looking to speak at this point. So on to the reorganization of the board, the election of the chair and secretary. And so I will open up that conversation.
Rich, I would like to nominate Meredith Hall for the chair position.
I second that. Discussion. You know, I, this is my eighth year on the board. Maybe some of you think that's been too long. But in, in, in my part, in my years prior to that, I was on the work committee and I attended planning board meetings. You know, in fact, 10 years ago, when the Henry's was being reviewed by that planning board. And, you know, there's been a, a tradition since I've been on the board and before for the chairmanship to, to rotate and that the, the secretary is the next, has been the next one who becomes the chair. And, you know, Rich has observed that pattern, been respectful of that pattern and has expressed an interest in being chair in his fifth year of the last of his term. And I, I think that this board, that he deserves that and that this board, I should respect that interest of his. And I would suggest that the people who have supported Rich and had an interest in him becoming a, a member of this board would probably have an expectation that he should have his turn as being chair of this board. And so I'd like for you to reconsider that. There will be other opportunities for everyone to be members. I was chair twice, but I'm also serving two terms. So I had my chairmanship once in each of the terms. And I would really like for you to consider giving Rich that respect.
I appreciate that, Cheryl. I mean, yeah, I mean, I, I will be honest. I kind of was hoping to be chair. I thought I owed it to the folks that voted me in. And honestly, I, you know, it, it, to your point, Cheryl, each term, I have been very vocal to make sure that we, you know, most of the elected boards do that. They rotate them. You know, as early as last year, there was a vote for somebody other than Denny and I, I turned it down. And I was very respectful of, of, you know, making sure that Denny had her opportunity. But obviously this is a, it's a vote, you know, and so, you know, I turned it over to the vote of the board, but I, I absolutely would be, would be interested and, you know, was, was looking forward to it for my community. And so, but, you know, it's, it's the, up to the board.
And honestly, I have to say, I, I've struggled with this. I spoke to Rich this morning because I wasn't sure what Rich was thinking. And so I reached out to him to say, you know, I would throw my hat in. You know, I had not talked to the other candidates, but I'm the other now members, but or the people who nominated. And, and so I've been struggling with this. I actually really have. And I was very open with Rich on, on that. Having been nominated, I, I, I really just, I have so many concerns right now at the time of where we are in this town. I think we all realize we really need to have a, a positive working relationship, no matter what happens and what's decided tonight. That the tone and tenor of, of our meetings and that we collaborate and work together is just, is absolutely critical. But I, I do believe that this, the referendum, this last round of the election cycle, what I heard loud and clear was what is really important to the citizens is, is a lot about the process. It's a lot about transparency and really making sure we, the, the citizens are heard. And I, I feel like the only way that I can feel like I did my absolute best is to say that I would agree to be a chair. And so I'm not looking for that, you know, I was not originally even, you know, thinking that way, but, but being nominated, I, I would accept.
I'm going to say one last thing too, having seen some of the questions that have come forward tonight and some, and, and the discussion about some of the, Rich mentioned about the running of the meetings and it's really important to understand what we're charged with on any particular item on the agenda. Site plan approval is different from subdivision is different from special permit is different from approval not required subdivision is different from scenic road. And, you know, Rich has four years of experience in really understanding what's required of us. And some, you know, frankly, there've been times when there's been confusion about what we're supposed to be doing and what we can rule on and what we can't rule on. We, we don't have a wide open roadway of things that we decide on. We have legal parameters that are very specific. Our decisions have to be based on those legal requirements that are set out in our bylaws, in the state bylaws and in the rules and regs. And I really feel as if it's best to have someone with, with some years under their belt to take the helm. And so out of those, so that's the second appeal that I would make. You know, in terms of whether we can address and hear neighbors' concerns, of course, that's a part of every aspect of what the planning board does. And it's particularly on public, public hearings, it's, it's mandated, right? And so, you know, a lot of, of what people have been, I think, concerned about recently is some zoning proposals. But that's only a, a, a small part of what we do. I mean, I anticipate what we're going to be looking at pretty soon is going to be an application for a memory care facility on Highland Street, which will be based on the zoning that was passed. You know, we may be looking at some applications in Milton Village, which will be special permits. And, you know, I've, I've led the board through a couple of complicated special permits. In fact, including Maggie's there nursery and Will Cut Woods. And, you know, there's, there's just a lot to understand and a lot to organize in terms of preparing the agenda. So no offense to Meredith and I'm sure, and I'm just making a pitch for why I think the experience and the respect that could be afforded to Rich, you know, I, I don't see that there's a conflict, conflict with, you know, the work of the board in terms of being congenial. You know, I've worked with a lot of different people over the years, you know, and I've listened and I've, I, I do and make my decisions based on a lot of homework. We have a responsibility to not only the people we hear from at the meetings, but to everyone in town. You know, it's, we have a responsibility to the applicants, whether it's a developer or a business owner or whomever it is. We have a responsibility to the town overall, because the zoning is something for the town overall and not just for the particular location that it is. So I would hope that, that your comment, Meredith, didn't reflect upon your fellow board members in terms of this past year, in terms of our concern or the way we've approached our job. Because I think we, we approach our job with a, a level of respect for everyone.
Yes, absolutely. The last thing I would want to do is, is take anything away from Rich. That is not at all my intention is to, is to, is to be looking at. That is not at all my intention is to, is to, is to be looking at it that way. It would.
Yeah, I, I know, I just would throw in, I mean, I, I appreciate that. I, I feel good about the last four years. I was very, I don't think I voted one side of anything. I was very thoughtful. I think I've done very well for our neighborhoods and, and stuck up and made sure that folks had a voice. I think, yeah, sure, that there was probably a pretty contentious vote that was recent. But I would hope, yeah, I would hope that you're not insinuating one vote that I didn't spend the last eleven years or working on a lot of things.
Not at all. That was not directed at all towards you.
Yeah, but so, yeah. Yeah, and so anyway, I, again, you know, again, normally this, this vote, this vote does just pass it around. So I will be honest, it's kind of offensive because this is, I don't, I don't know that this has ever happened before. So I do take offense to it, but, you know, it's, you know, it's the will of the board.
Oh, I.
I'm sorry, Maggie, go ahead.
Oh, thanks. So I support each and every one of you. I think you all are great town residents. I am not familiar with the past procedures of the boards. All I can do is vote how I feel today and how I have felt in the past several months to a year. And, and I have felt, and this is why I decided to run, was that I really believe from working with everybody in town that really town residents really didn't know what was going on. They, they didn't feel like they were being heard. And it's not just on the planning board, it's a town meeting and it's at the select board and it's on the school committee. It's all around town. And, and everybody's so kind and everybody is so nice in town and, and everybody is, has, we all have so much to give and to offer, but all I can do is go by what I've been feeling. And it kind of, why I got involved, it started sort of with the EDU back in December. And, and I've been hearing from town residents. And the EDU is a really, really big thing to so, to most of the town. And we just didn't feel like we were being heard. And Meredith listened to that and Denny listened to us. And I really felt like this whole EDU brought in, brought us all together, a good part of us together. People who've been here for fifty years or people who've been here for two years. People who invested so much money today and people who've invested so much time from so many years ago. And so I agree that the results of the election has showed that our residents want something different. That they want to hear a fresh voice. They want to hear somebody new. You know, I admired how she, Meredith stood with the residents against the EDU and then how she stood with the citizens petition that I was part of to amend the temporary apartment bylaw. I believe Meredith is in and around town, just like I am. You know, she listens to the residents every day. She's in every single neighborhood. And personally, I'm excited to hear her new ideas. I know she lives down close to Milton Village and this, I think this bylaw or the guidelines and the standards are huge to the town. And I think Meredith will be really sensitive to the, to the residents who will be mostly impacted. So I think that hopefully she can pull together from her professional experience and her personal experience. I think she really has the ability to pull people together. I know every day she is willing, I've seen her literally pull up her sleeves and get into the weeds and get into the dirt, you know, through, you know, working with the garden club. And I know that I already have a good working with, relationship with Meredith. I feel comfortable with Meredith. So, you know, Rich, I, I like you a lot too, but I just feel like I have to look at these past few months. And, and I don't know what, as I said, what happened previously, but I just want to move forward. I just want to move forward and, and I think it's an exciting time for Milton. And I think, you know, I do support Meredith in this.
No, that's fine. I, I actually, I don't think we need to keep going on. I'll be honest. And, and I just, the only reason I don't is because, like to your point, you know, you said you only kind of know about the last few months. I, I, I've spent eleven years, you know, putting a lot of time in. And I too was voted in overwhelmingly in East Milton because they wanted a voice. You know, there's a lot of areas of town represented here on this call. Milton Hill, I see Hillside, I see Indian Cliffs. I, you know, Cheryl, you're over in Canton, in Milltown. I'm the only one in one of these areas we're talking about. And so, and I, and I think if folks in my areas and folks that have been following this for, you know, past four years, been pretty strict in my stances. You're talking about one vote that, you know, you're, you weren't a part of for a year and a half that we talked about it. But there was a long process and, yeah, I had an opinion, but the, the, the problem is, is, and I don't want to get on this road, but there's a lot of changes coming to this town that this town can't stop. And we have to find ways of working with that to make sure that we aren't really hurt by it. And so this board over the next few years, quite honestly, it, it's gonna have to move mountains. You're not gonna be able to stop it. There are state laws changing things. And so, you know, there's, it's like time is running out, right? And so, you know, you need to make some changes in town so that we don't get hurt. And I think everyone has a different opinion on, well, what, what, where are we in that? What can I live with? And, you know, I made it, I made a lot of changes to something a board member put forward that I could live with. And I think that if a lot of folks in town that were very angry about it took the ride with it, I think they would have come somewhere in the middle as well. Because quite honestly, I mean, the, the state's putting, is probably gonna put forward an EDU bylaw that you're not gonna like, right? And so, I mean, it's probably all for nothing anyway. But anyway, I don't want to go too far on this road. I, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm also don't like, I, I don't want to be the, the poster child for the other side. I mean, I, I've done pretty, pretty well working with both sides of this board over the last four years. Like I said, I was very adamant that April got her due. I was adamant that Denny got hers. I was adamant that everybody did. I honestly, in the next years, I hope you guys do too, so.
Actually, Rich, I, I really am actually, those choice of words of both sides. I feel like I've tried to work with everybody on this board the years I've worked on it. We may not always agree.
I wasn't meaning.
So many times that we may disagree and we may disagree vigorously. It doesn't make us enemies of one another and it doesn't put us into camps. You know, I, we each bring something to this board and we should respect that. And, you know, all, all I've said tonight is just really asking for respect for Rich and the way things, you know, I've seen work on this board. You know, I, you know, there's sometimes in this board's made decisions that are unanimous and as many times they're not because we represent diverse ideas and that's the way it should be. And we should debate those ideas. We should have vigorous debates. That's the way we. And then once we get to those points where decisions are made, we should accept the decisions that are made by the majority and we should put that forward. And, you know, we heard someone at Citizen Speak tonight talk about affordable housing. People want us to, want the town to address affordable housing. It's everywhere. My work is in housing these days as an architect. It hasn't always been, but at least for the last five years, most of my work is in housing. And everywhere people are grappling with what to do about housing. And, you know, we, I think if we just say, well, we, we don't want anything to change, you know, then we're not part of the solution to the challenges. I think we have to be part of the solution. And I really hope we don't get into this idea of camps. I, I don't think it's a good approach. I don't think it's right for the town. We represent every single person who lives in this town, not just the ones who voted for us. And I've approached it that way and that's why I really would like for Sean to consider withdrawing his nomination and that I would put forth a motion to have Rich be chair.
I apologize, Carol. I didn't mean to say this first that. I, I didn't. I was thinking more like, there has been many times where the, that, quite honestly, I was a swing vote in many times. And I could have easily said, hey, this way or that way. But if, if anybody watches or takes the time to watch those meetings of the past four years, you will find that I, I tried to get the folks that were in the minority to, to find a middle ground, to listen to neighbors, to find middle grounds. And so I just, the only thing, the only reason I'd like to stop the conversation is because I, I only take offense to me being put on into a camp of, I was somehow trying to steamroll the town or change something because that is not what I've done for eleven years. And so I, I just find that would be offensive, so.
I, I don't have a lot to say, but I do want to say that my nomination of Meredith has nothing to do with respect or, or not respecting Rich. I, I think I will get to know Rich and I'll appreciate Rich and I'll, I'll, I'll hopefully find myself aligned with Rich in an awful lot of ways. My reasoning and my logic is really simple. I had one person who was an elected town official support me in my campaign, just one. And there were many town officials that are at least, you know, indicated to have been supporters of my two opponents. So I'm just choosing to support the only person who was a town official who chose to support me. And I didn't even ask for her support. She came to me and offered it. And I think she's an excellent candidate. I think she loves the town. So I think she has the qualifications to serve and my reasoning is that simple.
Thank you, Sean.
There's a motion on the floor.
Sorry, I've got to ask for the vote then. Sorry. Cheryl, the guy, let's go right down my list.
No.
Okay, Meredith Hall.
Yes.
And Sean Fady.
Yes.
And Maggie O'Neal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Rich, you have to vote.
I, I actually don't. I, I.
Is that an abstain?
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
Yeah. And Rich, really, it's, this is not anything to do with you. It's bigger, bigger picture.
Your show, Meredith.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I do, I, well, I'll just, I'll just stay briefly because we have another presentation. But future agenda items, I would love to hear from everyone. I think one of the first things that we want to maybe put on our agenda is discussion of how to move forward on, on what to do with the ADU article. And I also, I, I think we should also add the temporary apartment bylaw. We have a new board and I think in, with one in respect to the other, that should also be on. There's many things that we, that have just gotten dropped, unfortunately, with 440 Granite and the memory care, the cut and fill bylaw, you know, that would be something that I think we could easily put through and have that ready for fall. And then also, which we can fill Sean and Maggie in, is the 5G design guidelines for the new, the new equipment. I, I think that's something that we could adopt from other towns that have already implemented design guidelines. But I think that's something we should probably move on very quickly. So, but I would really love to hear from all of you on other things that you would like to see us address and, and put on our agenda. It, it will be busy on the twelfth because it's a public hearing. We have that, you know, we have a scenic road and we have Datsun blinker. So I don't want to overload that, but at least we could maybe touch on a brief discussion of a few of these things. So that would be all I have to add. And then we have the presentation, I believe. Tim? Tonight?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking for, for Steve Connolly in the, in the attendees. And there's, I, I don't see him, but there's a phone number. So Steve, if that's you, phone number ends in five, three, eight. If you could press star nine to raise your hand, so I know it's you. And if it's not you, then, there we go. So I'm gonna allow Steve to talk. This is Steve Connolly. I think star six. Unmute your phone, Steve.
Hello.
Yeah, we can hear you, Steve.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Stephen Connolly. I'm the manager of One Thirty-One Elliott Street LLC. With me tonight is Joseph Walsh. He's the architect of record with the Sullivan Architects for the project. There's two memos that we had filed and the first one is from Joe. I'd like to have Joe walk us through that memo and up for discussion regarding the parking. Were you with us there?
So I'm, I, I'm, I think Joe is gonna be on the panel in a minute, so. There he is. Joe, can you hear us? Joe, are you there? You might have to unmute.
Okay. You can hear me?
Yep.
Okay. So what, what we're coming in to do is to modify the, the parking paragraph of the special permit from back in 2017, it looks like. So the paragraph M had assigned different parking to both inside and outside the building. And part of it, it was assigning public use spaces for the commercial space that's in the building and also for general patrons in the central business district to be able to use parking space in the building. It, that sort of presents a bit of a security risk that, that the garage door into the upper level parking would always be open and anybody could basically get into the garage and, and potentially get into the residential area of the building. So what we're, would like to do is to sort of limit the indoor parking to the residents, of course, and then also to the, the operator and employees of the business that's gonna be located on the garage door. And that the rest of the parking, the outside parking would be open to the patrons of the commercial space and also to patrons of the other businesses in the, in the district.
So I'm gonna, just for, for, for everyone else's sake, I think Cheryl and I are the only old timers that had our hands on this one. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and walk through what I think are some of the, some of the, the, I don't want to use the term concerns, I, just the issues that we're gonna have to address here. And I'm gonna share my screen real quick, just to show everybody. This is the special permit. This is on page nineteen, section M, the parking requirements. So there are, there's eighty, and there have been subsequent amendments of this permit. So that I think there's, there's a note here that eighty-eight spaces are provided. A subsequent amendment is actually, and, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, there, there's eighty-seven spaces required, eighty-seven spaces provided.
Correct. That's correct.
So, so that's the only thing here that you can, you know, correct, ignore. There's, there's eighty-seven spaces. So fifteen of those are required to be business use spaces for the businesses in the commercial space. Fifty-four of those are for the residential units, six for the one bedrooms, forty-eight for the, for the two bedrooms. And then in addition to that, eighteen spaces for guests. And then in addition to that, 18 spaces for guests and their service people. So someone comes to fix the toilet or someone comes to, you know, celebrate a birthday party, that adds up to, to 87. The, the, the way that the lot is configured, and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I'm going off the most recent, the recent drawings. There are 22 spaces in the outdoor surface lot. There are 36 spaces in garage level one and there are 29 spaces in garage level two. That, am I, is that right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so that adds up to, again, 87. Now, the, 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 the issue that we need to kind of work around and discuss, and Katie Coleman alluded to this earlier in her comments during citizen speak, is that there's another requirement that 19 of the residential spaces be in the, in, in the outdoor lot and be open to users of the business district during the day from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Those revert to residence spaces in, in the evening. And so it, the, the, the numbers don't add up. If you've got to have 19 of those spaces and then you've got 15 business spaces that need to be moved predominantly from the inside to the outside. And so I think, you know, Steve and I kind of talked about, you know, a, an alternative scheme that, that may be less, I, I use the term disruptive to the existing special permit, but I think the, the sentiment makes sense. I, I, I think that, you know, and, and I remember talking about this during the original permitting process about, you know, the potential for there to be, you know, a difficulty in actually implementing this. But, you know, the permit is what the permit is. And so I, I, you know, Cheryl and I also had a little bit of chat about this earlier, Cheryl. I don't know if you have any, any thoughts that you wanted to add right now.
Yes, thanks, Tim. You know, this special permit has a provision. And I asked him to check to see that if we amended that provision. But the provision says strict compliance is required. So I'll just get to that section of the decision. And this has come up because this project has come before us a couple, three times asking, you know, for whether some change could be made that was deemed not to require it to go back as an amendment. But we've run into this language that was put in here originally, which I was on the board when this decision was, was written and when we, this, this public hearing was open. Okay, so it's on page 13 of the decision and it says there shall be strict compliance with the requirements and conditions of this special permit. So what we've talked about in the past is, well, the permit says something. Is that, so the strict compliance means exactly what the permit says. Right? So then if it's, if it does, then it means you need an amendment. Right? So my recollection, and I haven't been able to put my hands on it today, was that about two years ago, we changed that strict compliance to something less less finite, right, if you will? And so, you know, in thinking about it, I look back at the zoning also, and the zoning you know, under which this was permitted is section three subsection J. And under the parking, it, it says that under the business parking, that parking for business use shall be dependent on the type of business. So when we did the special permit, there was no tenant for the space. My understanding is there's still no tenant for the space.
Right.
So we could look at, you know, the zoning says four spaces per 1,000 square feet of business floor area. So that's how you arrive at the number of business spaces. But then it also says, or a lesser number of spaces determined to be adequate for the particular use. Right? So the special permit, so the zoning allows there, for there to be something different than what's in the special permit. Then the question becomes, what's the process for agreeing to something like that? Right? So is it by amending the special permit, which would require a, a public hearing, which is not what we have tonight? So what we're being asked tonight is to consider that it be something we approve without that. And so then we have to look at the merits of it, right, and see how significant we think it is. How much does it change it? Right? So when I was looking at this, I was thinking, okay, those 15 business spaces that are required are dedicated to the business use 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Right? And so now what we're being, what's, and those can be for anything. They could be for the workers, they could be for the patrons or customers of whatever business that is. So this request is to have those business spaces no longer be inside. And I think then there was some discussion, well, if they are inside, then they could only be for owners or workers of the business. So what, so that, that made to, it led me to the question, what does that mean for the customers of the business? Right? What if it's a dental office and you have somebody coming every hour? And then your own, of your required 15, you only have three in that lot, right? Because the rest of them are supposed to be available for the business district. And so, you know, that's the decision that we're kind of left with deciding, right? Do we think that's a significant change? You know, one thought I had was, okay, of those, those business spaces that are inside, if there's 12 of them, they're going to be vacant at night, right, when the business is not open? So should those be the ones that, of the 19, that are supposed to be swing between residential and business? You know, so the, so could those 12 spaces be required to be used before the outdoor spaces for the residents after 6:00 PM? Right? So if we see page nine of the, of the special permit, where it says 19 of the residential use spaces in the outside parking that shall be reserved for parking by residents of the development, their guests and service providers between the hours of six and nine. So Katie mentioned earlier that one of the reasons that this whole site came together with public land and the public private partnership was the importance of these spaces at night to be used during the day for the business district, right? So there were bonuses granted when this was, density bonuses that were granted when the special permit was issued. And it, in part had to do with those parking spaces. So I guess, you know, my, my thought is if those parking spaces, those 12 indoor spaces are tho, are those to be used for the residents? And that the, the outdoor spaces then would be more in par with what we thought was, we were going to have when this decision was written. Does that make sense? There's silence, so.
I, I would agree with that. And I, I was just wondering, I mean, would it be, would it make sense for us to do a site walk? And sort of see how the interior is sort of the layout currently. I don't know if that would be helpful for the new members. I, I walk this property area, you know, all the time. I, I feel pretty familiar with it, but I don't know if that would help, help people. And I, I agree with, I, I think, you know, the intent of wanting to do this is very reasonable. It makes sense from a real estate perspective. I can say, you know, it would probably add value to the units. It would be something desirable to the, to the condo owners. And, you know, if we can get to a, a point where there's reasonable parking, you know, we, we just, we don't know what the ultimate business will be. So we're, we're sort of working with that. But perhaps a, a site, a site walk, I just would draw, if, if others were interested.
Madam Chair, if I could speak, I was wondering, Tim, there's a picture. We submitted pictures as well. Maybe we could pull up the one with the parking lot? It would give a good visual of it tonight?
Yeah, that might, for new members.
Tim, while you're pulling that up, yeah, Tim, Steve, Tim gave all this to us. So we had a chance to look at the photos as well. He had emailed us in advance of the meeting. So my name's Sean Fahy. Steve, I'm, I'm, I'm a brand new member of the plan. And since I have.
Congratulations.
Thanks. I, I do want to compliment you. I think you've built a very attractive building and Joe, a, a nice job architecturally to create a building that looks terrific. I, I think the logic of this makes all the sense in the world to me. So I, I, and I, I trust, you know, Tim's guidance in terms, you know, to this point that Cheryl made earlier, in terms of what we can and can't do. I, I will look to Tim for guidance in terms of what we have the ability to, what we don't have the ability to do. So just what's described makes plenty of sense to me. There's one, there's one, when I read the special permit and there's one distinction here that I think is, and tell me if I'm interpreting this incorrectly, those spaces when they were indoor, the business spaces, effectively those spaces were parking allowed, it looks like 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. The parking that is referred to as the shared parking in M parking, item three, has a two-hour limit to it. So.
So the business use parking, my understanding of it, Sean, is like standard business use parking would be parking for the, for the duration that whatever business that would be in the space during those business hours. Well, I don't know if it's 24/7, but it would be, it's, the, the issue we're having is that from a safety issues to have purely public parking spaces under the building. So it would both have public pedestrian access along with cars.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Steve, I agree.
You know, that's, that's, that's our concern.
It makes all the, Steve, it makes the world to me. I, I agree with your reasoning and all that. I, I was just recognizing that the exterior parking and the interior parking, you know, it didn't look like there was any restriction on top for the 12 spaces that run the inside. Maybe that's not even an, an issue that even be a part of this. But I, I understand what you're trying to do. It makes all the sense in the world. If I was a resident of a building, I would want those spaces outside also.
The issue, Sean, sorry, Steve, just my, quickly, issue, Sean, is that all of the spaces required for the business use couldn't be accommodated along with the swing or shared spaces on the site when this was permitted, right? So the, the zoning requires a certain amount of parking for the residential, a certain amount for the business, which is dedicated to the business in the building. And then the shared were supposed to be a public benefit for this building to provide parking that's available to users of the district overall. So somebody going to steal and ride, somebody going, it's, it's a two-hour, that's why it's a two-hour limit, because it wouldn't, it would be intended to turn over. And it wouldn't be for commuters to use, you know, to hop on the train. So there's three different kinds of parking spaces really, if you think about it. So those that were to be the shared were also going to flip to residential use, one that wasn't business use, right? So the 15 really still need to be dedicated to the business use. Because, you know, the, that's what the zoning says. So, you know, the, the, now the accommodation for the type of business is some flexibility that's in the zoning, right? But the, the idea is that we want really to have enough parking spaces that serve both the business, the residents and and the district overall, right? So, right, Steve, that's what we're really, we're just trying to make sure that we still don't, we're not having parking spaces sitting empty because they're, they're inside or outside.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, and I, and I agree with that premise. Cheryl, what I'm, what I'm thinking about as, as you're discussing things, the board members, is we have the 19 spaces that are essentially the public amenity with our agreement with, with the town. Don't know if that's necessarily isolated to, that they can't be counted at all towards into business use parking. I think there's a natural overlap. Parking, there could be people parking in those spaces that'll use the site, use our commercial area along with some, some people who go to the rest of the district. But I, I think there's a natural overlap a little bit there. But I think in, in, in trying to keep with the original permit language the best we can and create a all the minor adjustment or amendment would be kept the language as is and kept the business spaces dedicated as is. The understanding of the zoning is that the board can make the determination that along with the public use spaces outside, they could designate the, the employee parking, management parking on the inside of the building, which would keep them as business use spaces, would have the outside space, essentially it'd have 34 business use spaces on site and would be able to secure our building.
Right.
Account for the people that are coming in. I think that's a viable solution. I think it's something that would work for us. Hopefully the board would get to that.
Yeah.
So I, I too think that the project, it's a great project and I think as long as the proposal doesn't change in the design or the configuration of the parking lot, you know, limiting access to inside of the building makes sense. And really, I think providing the business, the business owner some flexibility. You know, I, I have experience in, you don't really know how your project is going to end up, you know, at the start of the project. And I think having some flexibility in the language is always helpful and is always needed. And, you know, no matter how carefully you plan a project, you know, sometimes things just kind of always go wrong at some point. So I think just providing flexibility is important.
I think you get to this, to basically the, if you want to keep this something which is, I think, could be considered not requiring to go back for an amendment. If you, if we, and I think, Steve, I've mentioned this and I wanted to see what you had to say about it, but if those 12 spaces on the interior would be between the hours of six and nine, be used, be available to be used and actually be prioritized to be used when residents need those spaces. So that the intent of those outdoor spaces for the business district could be maintained. So is that something that works for you?
I think in the concept of it, what you're saying makes sense to me, Cheryl, to keep the most, make use of the spaces when the business is closed, essentially is what you're, is what you're driving at, right? So.
Right. So it's, it's, right, it's closest to what we have in this special permit now, that accommodates what you're looking for in term, I think, because at night, the residents presumably would be letting their guests in, right? And so, you know.
So the, the concept of it to me, I, I, I don't have a problem with it because we'd be able to secure the building. I think just the language of it would have to be, in my opinion, would be that we want to keep the business use spaces long as the business is open. We wouldn't want to have, have the six o'clock timeframe that we do on the pure public spaces out in the parking lot to accommodate the, the town amenity. But that, you know, maybe we could write it that they could be used upon availability after the close of businesses. Make sure we're not impeding on the, um, business use itself while it's open.
Yeah, I'm just trying not to have it be something where those 19 spaces are dropped down to seven, because I think that's a sign, more significant change. You know, and it might be a change that people are comfortable with, but I don't, I think it needs a different process. Because of the, you know, we have to make that judgment about whether, you know, it requires an amendment. And, you know, I know we've, we've made these kind of judgments, Meredith and Rich know, at Willcott Woods. Sometimes we say, yes, it's a small thing and sometimes we say, oh, you got to come back for a special, you know, an amendment. And so I'm trying to keep it as close as possible. So I'm comfortable with it being something that's
Yeah. What I'm saying, Cheryl, is that what I'm talking about the 12 spaces that are in the building. Not the night, and I, I'm not talking about outside at all. That is what it is. That's already been spelled out. We're strictly talking about the 12 spaces inside the building. I mean, amenable to have a residential use there at night. We just don't know that the six o'clock requirement.
All right, but let's say, let's say that the business closes at eight. Between the hours of six and eight, we've lost those spaces outside that were supposed to be available to the business district.
No, you haven't lost the ones outside. I, I don't.
Yeah, because those were supposed to be available at six o'clock, right? For use by the business district. But if the, if the, if that business is open beyond inside, then those, those aren't priority use after six inside. See what I'm saying?
But again, but how do you, you talked about the public end of that. Again, I'm trying to keep the public end of, of the interior spaces. I'm trying to either have it for the employees and then have it for the residences.
I understood, and I I'm not saying put the public inside, but I'm saying it's having windows spaces inside. You know, the nineteen spaces.
Oh, so, you know, yeah, so what you're saying is if you wanted to take the designation that we had, take twelve of the spaces from the outside and put them inside and then put. The inside spaces outside and leave and keep business use. And have that twelve spaces with that six and six designation in the building, is that what you're saying? I'm trying.
Yeah, so. Alright, so let's just say, right now, you you have. Fifteen business parking spaces, right, dedicated to the business, right? And of those. Three of them are outside and twelve are inside, right? Alright, so then outside. The night, there's the spaces that are available for the residents. To use for their use, which is the shared space, right? So the the shared space becomes, it's really just only residential use for nineteen out of twenty-two spaces outside. Between six P M and nine A M, right?
Right.
So if those. Spaces now, those three spaces that belong to the business. Are the only three that are available for non-employees, right? And then the twelve inside would just be for employees, so. Effectively, the number of business spaces available for customers is somewhat reduced, but what. My main concern is that those nineteen space, that those twelve spaces inside after hours are now vacant. Whereas they would have been available for business use after six o'clock. Otherwise. So I'm trying to get those to be available. And if you restrict their availability, then they're not in the same level as as they were in the permit.
Well, I, you know, there's two things there, I think, it's still, if employees using the space, it is. The nature of business use spaces is employee parking, owner parking, parking plus customer parking. So the nature of the space is you're still getting a business use out of it as long as the business is open. You you are losing the public access to it, but that's the whole point and for us is the whole point in trying to secure the building. But the nature of the spaces, the nineteen public amenity spaces. Not to be mutually exclusive from the fifteen business district spaces in general, there there is an overlap there, a natural overlap in use. I don't think, I don't think that. Strict in interpretation is thirty-four spaces on the one site essentially is what we have, I I I think that's. That's burdensome, I think there is some room for flexibility if you. If you're willing to do that, I.
Okay, so. Yeah, so what you're suggesting is that when you don't know what the business, alright, so what what if we. I mean, you could always come back too when you knew what the business hours were, again, to have the hours that they're available changed, right? Some from six to nine, not be six to nine, right? So in other words, those interior spaces would flip to the, just as they do in this permit, they flip from at six o'clock.
I mean, you you could unless there was, you know, we could find out when we get a use if. We needed to adjust that depending on the use, if we wanted the same designation, we could do that.
Right. Okay.
That makes sense.
Tim, does that make sense to you?
Um. I think so. It would be great to kind of see something in writing to 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 kind of be able to tell. I mean, I think I generally I'm following the the line of thinking here, but.
How about if I draft something and. And then we can circulate it. And we can. I don't know if we need to, if we want to take a vote yet until we see a draft, but I suppose what we could do is give some indication. That we're generally favorable to it and that we will review the final language together at our next meeting.
That sounds, I think that sounds great.
Does that work for you, Steve?
Yes, it would.
Alright, so are you all amenable to my taking a stab at doing a draft?
That would be great, Carol. That would be great, and I I think we are are all, you know, amenable to being flexible here, so.
Appreciate that very much.
Meredith, there was also some materials changes requested as part of this. That Alan and Major, their their memo sort of outlined various minor changes that they wanted to make. I don't know if you want.
Could you run through those? Yeah, could you run through those?
Sure. Yeah, there was four items. The. Tim, I don't know if you can get that memo up. It's from Alan and Major, there it is. They wanted to make some changes in the granite curbing. And. Outlining the outside parking area, eliminating the precast concrete. And the planting beds. At the Ellis Street residential entrance and along Central Ave, change from regular granite curbing to granite cobblestone. Curbing.
Joe, this is Sean. I I I read through this in advance, what Alan and Major, I just think it needs a little bit of explanation because. As it's written, it's not, it's not entirely clear. Number one, the Elliott Street parking lot entrance has a level five foot wide concrete sidewalk across the parking lot opening. It was constructed using granite curbing with D stone corners which match existing driveway entrances at adjacent properties. What is the question?
Okay.
Steve, I don't know, you're probably better.
Yeah, I. I can, I could touch on that. What we had, Sean, is the original design had granite curbing and it had a radius on it. And what happened with us was the availability of 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 curbing. With the different circumstances with COVID and the supply chains and things like that. The curbing issues, they're five and six month out, minimum for these, for the pieces. And we were able to locate standard D stone in in the straight granite pieces. As the, you know, the streetscape that's there. And what we did is we ran the level sidewalk, the concrete sidewalk right across instead of bringing the tower out from the parking lot to the street. That that's what the change is.
I see, it just wasn't clear Steve, the way it was written, it 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 just probably didn't describe what was previously designed. You know.
So have you already done this? Have has the work already been completed?
We we poured that sidewalk, we did, we did it last November. From it, it's from a scheduling purpose, I had it. We couldn't, you know, we couldn't get the radiuses, we, so we just, we went with it. Again, we have pictures of it that you guys can see and. Everybody seems pretty happy with it.
So I I have up on screen the the amendment from from May of twenty twenty that Cheryl was referring to. That modifies section T to kind of take away the strict compliance. Forcing to a little bit more of a flexible standard. And and all of this, I think, strikes me as as stuff that'll have to go through the building commissioner for his opinion. This is minor deviation may be permitted if in the opinion of the building commissioner, such deviations substantially materially comply with the approved plans and the special permit, so. I think this is something where, you know, we've we've got this, we've got this item on the agenda for the next meeting to kind of talk about the other language. I think we can get, you know, an opinion from from Joe and and kind of thread the needle on that one.
That makes sense.
Yeah, Tim, the way I read this, it does look like this falls to the building department. What I'm reading is minor deviations may be permitted if in the opinion of the building commissioner, such deviations substantially materially comply with the approved plans and the special permit, so. It does, it does, at least to me anyway, that that language designates the building department. Am I right?
That's that's my read.
Okay, so if if the building department determines that I need to come back with these issues, I'll come back to you.
Yeah, so I'll 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 get all this stuff into Joe's hands tomorrow morning, Steve, and, you know, we'll 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 see what he what he thinks. I mean, you know, I I I'm looking at the pictures, I I ride my bike by the site almost every day, if I'm not looking at it from the bus. Nothing looks crazy to me, so hopefully, hopefully it's okay, but, you know, the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I I understood, they they are, I mean, from the scheme of things, from layout and plantings and. The, you know, the the design of the of the of the site, it's all the same. It's that we use what we had available to us, because I'm trying to push this thing out and get occupancy at the end of May. Certain things you just, if you can't get them, you got to make, try to make a good decision on them. We stuck with granite. Different style granite at the at the entrance, you know, they call it a D stone instead of the radius and then. Cobblestones, I think they look nice anyway, I don't think there's, they're just around a couple of the planting beds, there's pictures of that as well.
They look nice, it looks nice.
Hey Steve, if I.
Great.
I think all those decisions, in my opinion aesthetically, I think the cobblestones actually fit what you've built, you know, really well. The the only question I had, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, when we look at the photos. And and there's a, there's a plant bed at edge at edge of pavement. Is what Alan and Major is suggesting here that there'll be precast concrete parking bumpers rather than a curb? So the there will be no, there will be no curbing to transition between the planting bed and the edge of pavement?
On on, it's, yes, in the parking area itself, instead of having the precast concrete curbing. We were just going to have the finished parking lot and then put the the car, the car stops at each at each parking space. And what happened with the with the grading of the site, once we had the finished floor for the garage. Also the sidewalks, and then you have the retaining wall with the M B T A. And then you work your way from there out into the parking lot and over to the abutting neighbor that has the the wood fence. The there isn't a need for curbing. The the way the grade, it's a nice, it's a, it's a mild pitch, very easy from the. Who need the water to run off away from the building, so we, just everything fit in really nice, and I think you can see that in the pictures as well. So it's just a necessity thing. Need that curbing. Parking lot drains well and.
Yeah, I mean, I I trust, I trust what Alan Major wrote in terms of their, in terms of their, you know, the the grading that they suggest. My own personal point of view is the aesthetic of finishing pavement with a curb actually looks quite nice. You know, as opposed to having mulch and pavement come together, you know, down at one end of that, you know, area and grab pavement comes together at the other end. It's it, just my aesthetic preference, but I'm not saying it wouldn't, it wouldn't drain properly, I. And I I recognize the purpose of curbing, you know, to move water when grading requires it, you know, to do so, that's makes. I know it quite well, so it's it's the only, you build such a beautiful property. I I I just look at that as something that aesthetically. Might look better with curbing rather than with parking bumpers, but that's, we have an architect on the board too, she probably has an aesthetic. Eye too, so that's my only comment, but the other com, the other changes that you made, the cobblestones, I I I actually think they're quite nice.
Thank you.
I actually, I actually agree, Sean, in terms of the curbing, I I think it's easier to maintain the. Landscape within the landscape and the snow plowing, not going into the planting beds, but maybe our. Our nursery and landscape person, Maggie, would have an opinion about that piece of it, but aesthetically. I I I kind of, I I agree with you about. The rest of the project having this level and that seems like it's kind of stepped, dropped down a little level there, but.
Yeah, my concern was just if the mulch was going to get washed out. You know, the curb kind of holds the mulch bed back, keeps it nice, it creates an edge.
Steve, what's the, what's the the length of of condition? How many lineal feet do you have there, you know, that this condition where it would be paving going to length?
Well, if you. Parking lot there, if you go from left to right with the. The wood fence is about a hundred and twenty feet and you have to do that radius over to the corner. But there's probably plus minus two hundred feet of curb.
Yeah.
That'd be a guesstimate, but my my issue with that stuff is just the radius is in the timeframe I got to wait for.
Is it the, Steve, is it the radius sections that you're having a trouble with lead time?
Yeah.
It it it, now, if you ran, there's some of that is certainly straight length, right? Not all of it's radius, I I.
Right, right.
Yeah, and and if you, if on the radius, if you ran shorter lengths and segmented, would that be, would that be possible?
There's ways of doing it, it's just aesthetically how it would come out, but.
Yeah.
You can run short, when you run shorter lengths, you can. Actually bend things, you know, you can make it work.
Yeah. Not ideal, I I, I understand your point. As I said, I think you built such a beautiful building, I, you know, I think Cheryl Cheryl's, Cheryl probably said it a little bit more eloquently than I did, but. You know, that that would seem to be a condition that would be a different standard than everything else that you did there, that's my only comment.
I would agree with both of your comments too.
But I don't even know if this is ours to comment on based on the that Tim just showed us.
I think, you know, certainly the the building commissioner is always interested in in hearing the input of 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 the experts. So I I think if if the planning board was was inclined to kind of just annotate, you know, that that memo a little bit. You know, I'm I'm sure he'd read it, but again. I I I do think that the that special permit amendment kind of, you know, if if it's going to be considered to be a minor deviation, he's the kind of one that makes that call, so. You know, it's 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 up to the board, the board can always kind of, you know, send their, send their thoughts to the building commissioner.
Yeah, well, I I, you know, from my point of view. Think Steve, what you did running that concrete sidewalk across that drive opening is an improvement. To me, that's that's aesthetically much more pleasing than having pavement, you know, interrupt the concrete sidewalk. And I think what you did with the cobblestones is is attractive as well, so. I, you know, I look forward, I think Cheryl's hopefully providing something that'll work in terms of the parking that'll work for you too, but. What you're asking for makes plenty in terms of the parking, my only comment actually is just. I I just don't love the trade off of parking bumpers for continuous curb.
Tim, can we put that on a memo just to Joe, just regarding that?
Yeah, I mean, if you don't mind, I I I, it doesn't even need to necessarily be a memo, I can in my correspondence with him, just let him know that the board, you know, that that's one item where, you know, they they would. You know, hope for some type of 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 curbing over there. I think, you know, one thing to 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 think about, and we can also kind of give this, you know, some thought before the next meeting, you know, if. Is there an interim condition to kind of, you know, we we all understand that there are supply chain issues and it's going to take time to to get this stuff. We want to have a functional project between now and then, you know, what a kind of interim condition may look like, if if anything. You know, but I I I can definitely, I'll 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 send the board's sentiments to. To the building commissioner when I send the materials over.
Tim, can I speak, just, you know, on behalf of a guy who understands what Steve's dealing with? I don't think there is any interim condition, you know, Steve Steve needs to get the pavement, finish pavement, and he, if it's going to be curbed, he needs that in. Before he he puts his his wearing cost down, so he probably doesn't have much opportunity for an interim. But.
So I just, just to chime in one more time on it to try to. We we are at a certain phase with their, you know, the landscaping, the sod, everything is in, plantings are in, grading is done, binder is in. Not an, uh, uh, not an easy thing with the, with the curbing, along with the supply of it. Also the, um, grading that will be required in the redo with the sod and things, and things have taken really well down there, by the way, the sod really you know, greener than the grass I have in my own house right now, it's great, you know, it really came out well, so I I could reconsider that last piece, like and the final code is on and our stops are in place and. Steely, it looks good, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's just.
Yeah, Steve, would you, would you consider a vituminous berm?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, and what I'm suggesting is can, consider a vituminous berm and put your bumpers in front of the berm. You know, you, my, my point is, we wouldn't use the berm, the vituminous berm to stop the vehicle, we'd use the parking bumpers, but the vituminous berm might, might be a better transition, um, you know, uh, so.
I, I, that didn't, that didn't enable me to move forward, I think that, that I'd be, no problem doing that if, if the board would agree to, yes.
I, I'm throwing it out there for Cheryl and the rest of the board to consider, but can, what was that curbing originally intended to be, what material?
The, the precast concrete.
Okay, um, you know, and, and I think, Tim, all I'd ask Steve to do is to, is to provide a detail of what that vituminous berm would look like. You know, there, there are, there's, there's different, there's different vituminous berms that you can use. Um, you know, a ca- berm, a, you know, a vertical berm, but I think if Steve provided a, a detail of what he would use for that vituminous berm, I think what it would do is allow Steve to keep moving, um, and create a better, uh, transition from pavement to landscape area. But, you know, Cheryl, as our, as our architect, I, I don't know, how would you like that, or what would you feel about that?
Oh, I don't love vituminous berms frankly, uh, because I think they get beat up in our climate by snow plowing. Um, so, I don't know, Steve, that's already a radius, and we're, you're going to have to clear the snow off of it.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna keep the parking bumpers in front of that, which means.
Okay, okay. Well, it's, it's better than none, I suppose, and with the bumpers, the concrete bumpers.
Concrete, the precast bumpers, correct, concrete.
Yeah, they're actually, they're a nuisance, uh, whoever has to plow this, those bumpers are always a nuisance for.
Anyway, right.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it, so you're not, if you're responsible for, for clearing the snow, you, you've got, you know, you're, you're not making it easy for yourself. But Cheryl, on, on the vituminous berm, a Cape Cod berm, uh, you know, it'll get, it'll get scuffed up and damaged by a plow, uh, if the blade gets to it, that means it's gotta get past the parking bumpers. But, you know, that might, that might be a little better than a vertical vituminous berm. Um, a vertical vituminous berm, I think, is gonna really create a, a nice end to the pavement. And Steve, if you keep the plows away from it, it, it should, it should be fine.
Yeah, if they could keep the plows away from it, you're right, the, the, um, vituminous should, should hold up. When we look at granting waivers for the kind of berms, uh, I mean, for the kind of curbing for roadways on other projects, we looked at some photos of vituminous that we got, that got banged up. And, you know, um, you know, one of the challenges for the road, just a little bit different, has to do with the drainage, right? Which here looks like, I do think, I did stop over there to the parking lot today before our meeting, and it does slope. I don't think that's gonna be the issue, but I do think that, as Maggie said about the washout of the mulch could happen. So maybe it's a good compromise just to have the Cape Cod berm and the concrete, um, bumpers.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the only question, um, Sh- uh, Cheryl is uh, the Cape Cod berm's not gonna give us as high a profile, right? It's gonna be a lower profile, if you go vertical vituminous berm, you're probably gonna get a profile that's gonna be, what, five inches in height, Steve's, like that, so, you know.
Something like that, right.
It, it'll, it'll retain the mulch and, there will be some heavy storms, there's no doubt about it, and when they happen, what Maggie said is gonna, so. Um, I, I, I guess my, you know, the, the, the taller that berm, the better we're gonna have in terms of retaining.
And they're better for plowing, as someone who's, who plowed for five years, um, you don't always know what's, when you have, you know, a foot of snow. So, um, just make sure it's properly marked for the plow, plow drivers.
Yes, stake them out, that's right.
So I'll, I'll convey that, I, I, I think, I think I've got all that handled, um, you know, the, the, I think the board kind of generally, the sentiment here is that a, a vituminous berm of, of some kind, I mean, do we, I mean, do we want to make a pitch for one or the other, or whatever is feasible, or, or what?
I'm fine to go with what Sean has recommended, the vertical, if it's going to give more, um, protection for the mulch, et cetera. I mean, there is a slope, so it's not flattening to it, so, you know, things are coming down.
You saw it in person, I'm looking at it in photo, I agree with you, I, I, I think that vertical is, is gonna perform better, uh, given that condition that's out there, and, and Steve, it, do you have any, do you, I, I know there's probably a few to all this difference per lineal foot for a vertical as it is to vitum, uh, Cape Cod, but would you be amenable with that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, I can, I'll, I'll make that pitch to the, uh, the building commissioner, um, and, and we'll, we'll see where it goes. They, they just put vertical vituminous on Walnut Street behind, behind Town Hall, and I'm disappointed that I didn't see the machine that was doing it, cause it looks really cool. Um, and I, I missed it, so. My kid, my kid loves trucks, so like, I'm always on the lookout for interesting trucks.
A, a quick question, with, with the three items, um, uh, Cheryl's gonna put a draft together that, to be reviewed, but the other two items are essentially squared away, you can, could we okay those tonight and I'll just do them? I, I, you know, and then we'll.
I think you still have to go through the building department, though, just to.
Yeah, Steve, I, I think, I think ultimately it's Joe's call, but I, I, I think, you know, again, we can also convey that the planning board has, has reviewed and discussed these, that um, the, the only, the only issue that they see is, um, you know, is that recommendation of a, a vertical vituminous berm, so.
Okay.
Um, and, and as long as, as long as Joe's, you haven't, you haven't irritated Joe too bad, have you? I'm sure he'll be fine.
I think we're, I think we're doing pretty good.
All right, good, so I'll, I'll get those in his hands tomorrow morning, and, and, you know, between now and next meeting, we'll have some clarity from him. Um, hopefully that'll all be sewed up, and then we can get some language on the, on the parking change straight away.
Okay.
So, Tim, just so I'm clear, if, uh, we can keep Steve moving here, right? If Steve goes to Joe and Joe agrees, then Steve keeps on moving, he doesn't have to come back to us, right?
Yeah, I don't think, I, I, I think, you know, if, if Joe could on Monday say, yeah, this is all fine, go ahead, um, especially if, if some of it's already been done, um, you know, hopefully he thinks it's okay. Um, I'm sure he will, um, but, but yeah, I, I mean, I, again, you know, you got, you guys tell me, I mean, that, that, the, the language in that, in that amendment, which kind of, you know, says, you know, minor deviation may be permitted if in the opinion of the building commissioner, such deviations substantially and materially comply with the approved plans. I mean, what you guys can say right now is, if you want to make it nice and official, is, is take a vote to, you know, you know, conditioned upon, you know, the, the building commissioner's, you know, decision, um, you know, you think that these are, are minor deviations.
Yeah, but I think we would have to put the curb discussion into that, uh, motion.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, I'd be willing to do so, um, if, uh, my fellow board members would too.
So, Tim, do you wanna give us, um, some suggested language for that motion, since we have some some people who might want some guidance on the, the language?
Yeah, I don't really know how to do this either, but, um, so, uh, the motion would be that, um, the, uh, the, the planning board, um, can, can, uh, can condition, conditioned upon a determination from the building commissioner, um, as per, per the amended paragraph T of the special permit as amended, um, on May fourteenth, twenty twenty, um, that the, uh, four changes outlined in the April fourteenth memo from Allen and Major, um, are considered to be minor deviations from the special permit. Uh, conditioned further that the, um, which one was it about the curb? Number two?
The vertical.
Vertical, yeah.
Um, can, can, conditioned further that, um, a vertical vituminous berm replace the, um, precast concrete, uh, curbing um, in, um, in, in change number two. Julia will clean that up in the minutes.
Yes, okay.
Um, but you, but then also have to say, um, the inclusion of the precast concrete car stop for each parking.
No, yes, yes, um, so, so further conditioned upon, um, a, a, a vertical, a combination of vertical vituminous berm and precast concrete car bumpers, replacing the precast concrete curbing, um, described in item two.
So if that's your most motion, Sean, I will second it.
Okay, that is my motion, thank you.
One second, yes, good. All in favor? Roll call, Maggie?
Hi.
Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Okay, so I will, um, I'll, I'll make sure that, I'll work with Julia to make sure that, um, we've got that all straight, and we'll get that over to Joe, um, first thing in the morning. And, um, uh, Steve, Joel will be in touch, um, about his determination on that stuff. And then, um, in the meantime, Cheryl's gonna draft up some language on the parking provisions, um, you know, we'll, um, you know, we'll share that with you to make sure that that makes sense, um, and that'll be something that the board can, can act on, um, at this next meeting.
Okay, uh, thank you very much, and I appreciate you working with us on this with the different circumstances to the finish line, greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Take care.
Bye. Okay. So that was the only other thing on our agenda, Tim, unless, did you have anything else?
Um, I mean, I did include a standing item about discussion of zoning articles, but, I don't know. We can get out of here at nine o'clock.
Yeah, I, I think we, yeah, you know what, I think, let's, let's move to have that on the agenda for our next meeting, I think, um, cause I, those are things that I definitely wanna we, we need to focus on. Does anyone else, how does anyone else feel, or do you want to discuss it tonight? I, I'm, I'm happy either way.
No, I, I would like, um, to give Maggie and Sean a little bit of time to get their feet wet, but the rules and regs of the planning board has been something that we've talked about changing a number of times. And, um, at a later date, I can go into some of the reasons why, that it's been on our radar screen, but if you would just take a look at them, Sean in particular, you'll find that the roadway cross section and some of the other things that are required for roadways is just like nineteen fifties kind of, um, standards. And they really, we have lots, we've granted lots of waivers. Our rules and regs shouldn't require us to grant lots of waivers all the time, you know, they should reflect what we want to see. And so, um, uh, you know, if, uh, you know, we, we end up having, uh, each year, we end up having, I think, really, um, great goals, and then we end up getting applications, and the applications, you know, have deadlines, and we have to put aside the things that we're working on, and and so it might sound like, well, haven't you gotten that done all this time, Cheryl, you know, but it's because, um, you know, we, we end up with a lot of these things that can take many, many meetings, like, um, a special permit for Walcott Woods, for example. And I anticipate if we get the special permit for memory care, it's gonna take a lot of meetings. And so, you know, it just may be that we have, we don't have enough time to work on everything, but I just want to put that one out there.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, I should have put that on the list, Cheryl, that, that, that's obvious, definitely something I think we should address.
Otherwise, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Yes.
All in favor? Roll call, uh, let's go, uh, Rich?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, guys.
You too.
Good.